Good morning. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication will come to order. Notice of the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets via electronic format on December 18, 2015, with a second notice provided on December 26. Notice of this hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. This morning, we have one bill to hear, and that will be Bill 217-33COR, introduced by Senator Brent McCready for a $200,000 Department of Agriculture appropriation to the fishing platform. And this afternoon, the committee will reconvene to hear two bills: Bill 212, introduced by myself, related to funding for the Attorney General's office, and Bill 222, related to anti-enclassified pay manipulation. This morning's hearing was introduced by Senator Brent McCready. I also received a letter from Senator McCready late last night, early this morning, asking if I would allow Senator Tony Adetorita's opening statement. So I'll invite Senator Tony Adetorita to read Senator Brent McCready's opening statement.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and on behalf of Senator Brent McCready, he apologizes for not being here today for the public hearing as he is currently off island. Bill 217-33COR appropriates $200,000 for the completion of the Paseo de Sasa fishing platform, which will create a safe place for our local fishermen to catch fish for their families. As you may remember, the groundbreaking for the project was held in September earlier this year and is expected to run parallel to the rocks on the west shore of the Paseo de Sasa Park. The fishing platform will create a safer fishing environment for local fishermen by allowing them access to the water without having to climb over the rock borders. Currently, funding only allows for nearly 137 feet out of 500 to be completed. However, the permit for the project was approved by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for 500 feet. The $200,000 is identified pursuant to the specified fishing agreement made by Guam Quota Management, Inc., and the Hawaiian Longline Association to use half of Guam's quota of 2,000 metric tons of bigeye tuna catch this year. The specified fishing agreement states that the $200,000 must be used for Guam's fisheries development projects and the Paseo de Sasa fishing platform as such. This bill ensures that the necessary infrastructure is funded and completed for our island's fishing community, and its use will encourage our people to share the fishing experiences with friends and family, thus helping to preserve our fishing traditions and cultures. Sincerely, Senator McCready. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. We also have three individuals that have signed up to testify: Mr. Matt Spillon, the Director of Department of Agriculture; Mr. Joseph Cameron, President of the Department of Tomorrow Affairs; and point of contact for -- and Mr. Manny Duñez, the Guam Fishing Co-op.
Mr. Director.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Pichu, Senator Adet, Senator Espadón. I'd like to take this opportunity this morning to thank you for giving me the opportunity for testifying support of Bill 217-33COR. As the Director of Department of Agriculture, along with my deputy director and the department itself, we do support the bill, fully support the bill. As mentioned earlier, there's an ongoing project, and I guess the verbiage for that is it's an extension over completion, because it is a total of 500. But yes, it's an extension to the existing 137 feet, ongoing now. So yes, I'm here this morning, and I thank you for the opportunity. I am in full support of Bill 217.
Half a day, guahu si Joseph "Arter" Cameron, guahu director, presidente para el departamento de Icaha, ognan semoro, zan gua lo kui kumalulu i, da testigo gin in ofisina ni gobetnu, no ni onorabli na mauli castina bill, senador, sa no por n'adzuda etoristis i tau tau tan, i sina man matu gatu gi za hagatnia, da sina man haguit man pescado tasi, zan no ti megel peligro sa no gi temponantis angin man mafatu i pescado para i temponatulai, man manotogi gi atso zan no sina abventi man sulun zan man modung zan man setnudan. Lo esti na programa, gosh mauli para tori tau to para inuti, pa man omku, pa edze siani man ragu, man haguit tasi pescado, pa ha'zi sina man ragu no hu maktua ni proli i bonituna, ni edze i angin atdo, pa angin kau lu i semnak, gosh bonituna lugat, zan bagahit na esti na lugat lo kui, ma pepega na paraguaha nu ocho shea na ine'nun durantini festpac. Si zuz maasi gin in ofisina gobetnu, zan i departamento de Icaha ognan semoro, bagahit da sinceru na tabe na biba estina bill. On behalf of the Department of Tomorrow Affairs and as the point of contact for Fisheries and Ocean Matters for the Office of the Governor, we fully support the endeavor of this bill, and as the Director of Agriculture has so stated, it would add as an extension to the existing pre-approved Army Corps of Engineer process to make this project work. Thank you so much.
They're all short. Sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senators. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. Please bear with me. My name is Manny Duñez. I'm the President of the Guam Fishermen's Cooperative Association. We are in full support of this bill. The $200,000 is part of an agreement between the Hawaiian Longline Association and the government of Guam, and the beneficiaries hopefully is the people of Guam. I just want to share with you that over the years, all these projects that are being moved forward from this fishing platform, which is ADA compliant, just to let you know that 70% of the people in that area fishing are Vietnam veterans, and they're all in their 70s. So this is befitting that we do this for them and let them live their final days in the peace that they've always found aside from war in that area. So we fully support the idea of continuing the platform. We are short on the money. We will never reach our 500 feet, as our goal is, until we keep asking. And I've got to mention that all the three funding sources, including the one from the Department of Agriculture, all come from fishing monies, including the developments to the marinas, both Agate and Ganja, and the Port Authority has greatly assisted. I take my hat off to Joanne Brown for all her help. But I want to mention that this is all community-based initiatives. The people that are fishing, the people that are using our ocean, have taken upon themselves to plan their future, and they've too often come to this legislature asking for assistance. So we've taken upon ourselves to go and ask the federal government. Again, all these monies are fisheries monies. But you know, at the end of the day, that fishing platform is not going to be only for fishing. At the end of the day, there'll be tourists walking that platform every day. It's going to be like Santa Monica. It won't be as great, because we won't have restaurants out in the ocean and everything. But if you ever go to Chamor Village on a Wednesday night, you find 200 or 300 tourists on the co-op side of the ocean snapping away at the sunset. Imagine if that platform was going all the way down 500 feet. What kind of atmosphere will provide for them? You know, tourism is great, but the thing is, we have to provide for the tourists, and no one cares more about tourism in Guam, I'll tell you right now, than the people that are seeing the tourists every day, and that's us on the ocean, because over half of our tourists visit us. I just want to put a plug in for Bill 160 for the $2, so we can further enhance our people's benefit to the resource. But again, at the end of the day, it's all about providing for our people first, and second, we provide the infrastructure and amenities to make Guam a better place to visit. Again, we are in full support of this bill, and if you guys can find a few more pennies somewhere and make it a full 500 feet, I think it would be whoofy to do that. And I know GMH is in a lot of trouble and everybody else, but you know, then just give us our $2 for our tourists, and we're okay. Okay? Thank you very much for the opportunity, and Happy New Year.
Mr. Cameron, just for the record, my office and I, we were a little concerned about this money. Does it go into the general fund that we can appropriate?
I believe that when this money comes in, it makes its way to agriculture, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Actually, from the Hawaii Longline Association, it will be a grant given over to Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council. From there, it will be accepted by Ms. Kitty Simmons, and she would do a sub-grant to the Department of Agriculture. It is federal money. It would be actually established as an account with the Department of Administration under the federal 5101 category. So it is dedicated. It is general, I mean, federal fund.
Okay. Manny?
Yes, Senator, Mr. Speaker. The money is private funds coming out of the Hawaii Longline Association as part of the agreement, $200,000. For the beginning part, it's $100,000, and towards the end, we get another $100,000. But it goes into what we call the Sustainable Fisheries Fund, and that it becomes converted to a federal quasi-account. But that money can be made, the check can be made to any account within the government of Guam. It can be made to Treasure of Guam. I'm sure that private agriculture doesn't have their own account, so it's all going to Treasure of Guam. That way, you can appropriate as you feel necessary.
We were just concerned about that.
Yes.
And I'm hoping that Adalup understands that this sets a precedent of money being received that can and should be appropriated by us.
Well, that was my concern in the beginning, because the check could be made directly to the GOCA or the Department of Agriculture. But I think in clarity, as far as how money is brought into Gulf Guam and how money is spent, I think this is the best avenue, and I think the approach is correct. It's just that the quagmire of going to the rigamarole of $200,000 is kind of, you know, it's time-consuming, you know, in a public hearing and all that stuff.
Oh, no, the public hearing is fine.
No, but I mean, all the legwork.
The legislature appreciates the fact that there's a recognition that we are the authority for appropriating, and I'm just, I didn't realize anybody was willing to give that up as a direct federal grant that we can now appropriate from.
It's not a federal grant.
But if you're willing to set this as a precedent, it will be deemed so.
For clarity, Senator, it's not a federal grant. It is money that will be going to a federal account to be deposited. But I just want to mention that over the years, the Sustainable Fisheries Fund has acquired about $4 million through fines and penalties on the remote island areas. The Fisheries Council has given Guam almost a million dollars of that money. American Samoa also got that fair share, and CNMI, and other various projects. So whenever fines and penalties come from the incursions on the remote island areas, it goes to the Fisheries Council, and the Fisheries Council, through its representatives, decide how the money is to be spent. And generously, we've received close to a million. As you noticed in the platform funding, there's $250,000 that came from that fine and penalty. We also have a mania project.
Was that appropriated by the legislature?
No, that was a direct grant to GOCA. It was given to GOCA.
That's why I'm trying to get it.
Yeah, that was a different amount, because that was a fine that was federal money going into a federal account. What we have here in this scenario is private money going to a federal account. We didn't have to go through this necessarily. You know, the check could have been written straight to agriculture, but I believe that there was an issue as to make sure everything is set in precedence in this case, because it was private money that started the whole scenario. It wasn't federal money.
We appreciate it.
So if any other question?
Well, no, I just wanted to make that clear as to whether or not we have the authority to be appropriating this money.
I guess you can consider it like, almost like a tax, you know? Your tax money goes into the account.
I understand, but that $1 million didn't come through, wasn't appropriated through us.
That was grant money.
I understand, but it still didn't come through us, and so I'm just, this is precedent setting, so I wanted to put that on the record.
You like that part.
Well, I also attended this hearing to put the same thing on the record. I understand the bill has well-intentioned, but are we really creating more problems than actually solving solutions with this bill? Because who's to say that if this bill makes it out of committee and is being debated on the floor, who's to say that the $200,000 might not be reduced to another amount or maybe another project identified? So if you're saying to us, Manny, that this grant and director and Mr. President, if you're saying that this grant can be made directly to an NGO, wouldn't that be the better, safer route than to go through this legislative process where you cannot guarantee the outcome? Because we were already, for the record, I'm sure the chairman will point this out, there's already a letter of concern regarding this bill that this money should be better spent to provide that boat ramp access off the Ellic Bay Area, which the government fixed that bridge and did not provide for that access into the eastern shores. And so I want to ask for the record, is this bill necessary?
Hey, Senator, like I said in the beginning, I think because it comes from a private entity going to us, it cleans the money, you know? It shows track. And just to mention that this is not the only $200,000 we may be getting, because normally it's a three-year agreement, and this is the first agreement. I know, like I've told people, stop talking about it, because I feel bad for the Samoans and the CNMI, because they got less for three months. We got $200,000 for one month. We negotiated that.
So if this is considered a special fund into the general fund?
Right, I mean, it's a private entity giving into the fund, so it's almost keep track of the money. Whereas a federal grant, you have a tracking system.
But wouldn't you be concerned that this monies might be diverted to the hospital or to education?
Well, that's my concern, like you mentioned in the legislation.
I mean, we have millions that have been eroded out of the recycling revolving fund, where people are paying on their vehicle registration, hoping that this money will be used for some recycling initiative, and over the years, there have been some $12 million that eroded from that particular fund, which we're asking the public auditor to get to the bottom of.
Right. But I trust the wisdom of the 15 bodies in the room.
Sure, but nobody can control the outcome in this process and not have been controlling whether or not the governor will actually take this appropriation and apply it to finish that fishing platform there at the Paseo area. And so, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, it's certainly your call when it comes to these kinds of money matters, but given our experiences with how this government operates from time to time, I would be very cautious about moving forward on this bill.
Just for clarity, actually, the hands of the legislature are kind of tied in this scenario, because there's an agreement that was adopted by the federal government called the Marine Conservation Plan, and only those projects within that plan can be funded. That's why the fishing platform was identified.
But it could go to another project that would benefit fishing.
Within that plan. That's the caveat within that federal document that's been approved.
So then just treat this like a federal grant. I mean, we don't appropriate federal funds. That's why the chairman is saying, you sure you want us to start appropriating federal funds? Because it can be more of a headline-grabbing opportunity and actually an opportunity to do some great work for this community.
If I may chime in. Yeah, Manny is correct. We do have the Marine Conservation Plan, and with that, it's renewed every three years, and the fishing platform is one of the priority. So it's already a dedicated. Westpac is aware of that project, and that it's, and again, they want it to go, the appropriation go to the $200,000, go to the extension of the platform. The front office, I've spoken to the front office, they are supportive of the fishing platform extension for this appropriation.
But Director, you don't need an appropriation to provide this money go to that project.
In fact, it was the governor that made, I guess, the agreement with HLA, and he actually mentioned about the platform.
So we don't need an appropriation from the legislature in order to make that project a reality, right?
Right, right, yeah.
Because if we're going to go down this road, I'm excited about knowing what kind of other federal funds are going to be available, and I'm going to be introducing so many bills so I could say I did it.
Like Manny mentioned, it came from a private entity over, and it's created as a federal fund, sub-granted to the Department of Agriculture. And it's considered then a federal grant. It'll be deposited DOAS in the federal 5101. Yeah, and it's, in fact, I've been having collaboration with Ms. Kitty Simmons, and she wrote through email, and she's excited about it. She's aware that she wants it go directly to the fishing platform. And that's from the one that's going to actually disperse the money as a sub-grant or award to agriculture.
Well, thank you for the feedback, and I, again, for the record, congratulate Senator McCready for sensing that there's money coming down the pike and to want to be a part of an effort that probably will happen anyway.
I can send you the email. I can forward you.
Maybe we don't want agriculture to just have the money.
I don't know, Manny. And this is also a departure from, maybe it's a new year, and you want to try something different, but the old Manny I know would never want to go down this road. Not the old in age, but the old in wisdom, right? And your experiences in these kinds of issues.
I am just excited that money has been identified and money has been received.
So what if this bill doesn't pass the legislature? If it passes and the governor reduces the amount or vetoes it, what's going to happen?
Well, I don't think.
Well, you know, there's no guarantee.
Really, like I said, you know, as much as you guys have heard me rant and rave, I really feel that you guys know the priorities we feel, and I think that any shortfall or any shorting of this bill would not happen. It's Christmas and New Year.
But procedurally, if nothing happens from this point on, this $200,000 will be applied to the expansion of that fishing pier.
Right.
Okay, so my point was made.
Yeah, either way. But like, you know, I understand the concern, believe me. I didn't understand why we were going down this road, but I just thought it was to legitimize the process, because this is the first step. We have two more years of potential, another $200,000 per year, that could go into the community directly, you know, in the sense, but you know, we don't, I think because the governor signed an agreement with a private company to share our quota, I think that was the point, to make sure that that money is covered as far as being received by our government.
And for the record, we cannot divert any of these monies to fund another project, specifically the access over, which we have another site visit for that area, and agriculture supportive of trying to find ways to provide a boat ramp access from the Ellic Bridge. But just for the purposes of our edification, and when this thing, if it does make its way through the legislative process, that Senator should not be excited about the possibility of taking some of this money and giving it somewhere else.
And again, Senator, the granters, they are aware of that the fishing platform is part of the Marine Conservation Plan, and it's one of the priority. So yes, they want it to be directly to that project, the ongoing project, extension.
And I appreciate the opportunity, because I could see us in the floor. It's money for the museum, money for operations for the, you see.
And you know, all three of us were there during the groundbreaking, and the excitement was there, so I understand Manny's, as Director, I'll make sure that.
Well, I was at the groundbreaking too, and we just want to make sure that this money is not going to just be very focused on what we're doing here.
And again, I can forward you the email from Ms. Kitty Simmons, and she was, she even stated, what's all the frustration here? I'm going to just sub-grant it to you.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
If I may, and again, I don't think anybody's really opposed technically to the concept of extending this platform. I guess the real issue is really, and Mr. Director, you've mentioned it several times, this is a grant or a sub-grant, right? And I guess in my mind, this is kind of like the first time that we've been approached to appropriate a grant from federal, that's in a federal account. And I think that's the difficulty that even I am having with this. It's like, why are we going down this road if what you said is true, that there is a Marine Conservation Plan? The Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council really has a say of how this money's going to get spent. That money is then put by the private concern, which is the Hawaii Longliners Association, into a fund that's controlled by the Fisheries Council and who already have determined that that's what they want to do. To then now ask the legislature to appropriate that's really not technically within the general fund and is acting as a grant, I guess I'm just a little baffled by this whole process, because usually we appropriate from what is put into the general fund as opposed to what is granted to us or given to us in the form of a grant to do something. So if it's already predetermined that the money is going to go towards the fishing platform and it's in the form of a federal grant, then the legislature, in my mind, technically has no role in appropriating that money, because it's not within our control to appropriate. I guess that's a concern I have. It's not so much whether we can agree that this is a good thing or not. This is a matter of, are we rightfully in this to appropriate when really it's not within the purview of the general fund? It's an award. It's a sub-grant. And I guess that's the question. Is this, and I think that's definitely what the chairman and the vice speaker perhaps are trying to allude to, is this step absolutely necessary? Or is it even warranted? Because can we actually appropriate federal grants?
And Senator, just to chime in on that, I did pass out handouts, and it's on page two, the processing of funding.
The processing of funding. In fact, I was taking a look at it, and that's where, again, I'm getting a lot of this information. If, as you say, that the Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council will do a sub-grant or award to the Department of Agriculture, it's an award or it's a grant, right? It's not technically, and you already said that it's, you know, again, there is a master plan or a Marine Conservation Plan which this fits under that was predetermined already, and this money is going for that specific purpose, then why do we need to appropriate it?
Yeah. It kind of mirrors the initial project, the first, the original project on the process. It was through sub-grant.
Right. Did we appropriate that?
Yes, yes, the ongoing project now, the 5/4.
No, the initial, so the initial grant to kick this all out was not appropriated by us? But it was the same kind of funding source and the same kind of process, wasn't it? That it went into the fund, into the Western Pacific Sustainable Fisheries Fund?
Right.
And that money was then taken and said, hey, go build yourself a platform. And then the Army Corps of Engineers said, we'll approve up to 500 feet, but with the money that was given, we can only do 130-some feet, right? But I guess the point is, we didn't have to appropriate any of that money, because it was granted for that specific purpose. If you're saying that the $200,000 is also granted for that specific purpose, then why now are we part of the process of having to appropriate it when we never appropriated it before?
We're just here.
Just again.
We're just here to support the project.
Right, and I understand that. You know, we understand the support for the project. For our concern, it's a matter of mechanism. Are we even part of the mechanism to allow that funding to go forward? Or is it already predetermined that's exactly where the money's going to go? And since it's not a general funds and it's an award or a sub-grant, then really, we have no place to even talk about this, because it's already predetermined and is being pre-allocated to this specific project. And I think the concern that the vice speaker and the chairman are saying, if we go through this, this is a first-time event, if we go through this process, you stand the possibility, well, first of all, I'm not really sure we belong in this, and so we could probably even be breaking or perhaps subverting some kind of federal mechanism that allows us to happen. Because like the chairman said, what if there is a no vote? And again, hypothetically, we all understand, everybody wants it, but hypothetically, if there is a no vote, does that mean this funding will not go to the extension of this platform, even though it was predetermined already by the council that this is exactly where the money's going to go? So why are we even in this discussion? Manny or Joe, I know, Joe, you sit on the council, I believe? Is that correct?
The Director of Agriculture, by statute, federal statute, sits in the council.
Okay, so the Director, okay. But I guess it just comes back, Mr. Director, to that issue, right? Are we trying to insert ourselves where we have no right or business inserting ourselves? Are we trying to insert ourselves where we have no right or business inserting ourselves? Because these are federal, it's coming from a federal account for a specific purpose that was determined by the Fisheries Council, and that's where the money's going. Why do we need legislation for this?
Well, I agree with you, Senator, and like I said, I'm just here to support it, that project. It is, eventually became a federal fund, and it is identified under a federal 5101. So, it's--
So, it doesn't need local appropriation?
I was asked, I mean, you know, to come and support Bill 217.
Right, so if we do nothing at all with this bill, this thing's going to move forward anyway?
No.
Because it's already been predetermined by the council, this is how the money, this is how much you're going to get, this is where the money's going to go, and that's that.
Right, and again, I've been communicating with Westpac, and they are aware that it will be directed to the extension.
Right, so they're under that understanding, too, because that's what they decided was in the best interest after perhaps some good input from you and anybody else from Guam. But again, to me, it's the mechanism. Are we inserting or are we unnecessarily being involved in this situation where we have no involvement?
Right.
That's my issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank them for coming out to testify, and maybe on a markup or a meeting, we can actually iron out all these issues with the sponsor of the legislation. And I know the concern of, you know, it going somewhere else, whether to hospital or anything like that, but I know it can't, because the specified fishing agreement states that it can only be used for fishery projects here. So, hopefully, we'll be able to iron all these things out, and if no legislation is needed, that's great. However, if there's one that's needed, at least there's one here that's on the table.
And just to add, Senator, just to add a caveat to that, the funding account that will be identified, it's good, of course, it's going to be a new one, but it'll be under the same project number. So, that actually designates it to that project, the same project number. Different account number, but it'll be directly to the same original project number.
Thank you very--
With or without legislative approval?
Yes.
Without. Okay.
Thank you very much for testifying, and we appreciate this precedent-setting hearing.